Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lynda Rosenberg. And of course, we are very excited that you're here for more details about the Excellence Act. And I have with me the people who are actually most expert about the Excellence Act. For those of you that heard me this morning, I mentioned all three of them because they have been working and supporting and trying to move this bill for several years. And now they're here really to talk about it and answer your questions. So you all know, I'll say again, the brilliant Chuck Engolia, our policy leader, the talented Rebecca Farley, our senior director of policy, and the highly skilled lobbyist who has been with me since the day almost I started at the National Council, Al Guida. Who, in addition to the Excellence Act, it was this team that also got what will be and go to all of you is the mental health money. So they had quite, mental health first aid money. So they had quite a role. So I'm going to turn this over to Chuck and I'm going to go sit down.
All right. So we wanted to take a few minutes just to talk about kind of how did we get where we are, what's in the bill, but mostly also to hear your questions. Because I think, as was indicated this morning, passing legislation is just the beginning, right? It kind of sets the stage and then we've got to worry then about implementation. And we've already begun thinking about implementation, both about, you know, having conversations with federal agencies, but also what will you need regarding implementation. But we don't think we have all the answers. And this won't be the only opportunity for us to hear from you. We want to begin to have that, make sure that we're thinking about this in the right way. So, you know, first I want to just talk about, Lynda did, you know, kind of the stroll down memory lane this morning about how things have changed over the last 10 years. And since Lynda got here, you know, really the question for the National Council staff is what can we do to help our members? And I remember I started at the National Council the day that the Deficit Reduction Act was introduced in Congress. And you guys remember those fun times when they tried to change case management and the rehab option? And we fought really hard to stop that. And around the, you know, and one of the things we realized, right, is in a way how vulnerable we were because almost everything that we do is optional in Medicaid and prone to change at any time. Right after that, we saw huge investments in federally qualified health centers, which are important. They play an important role as safety net providers in their community. But I kept getting these questions from you saying, "What about us?" And one of the fundamental problems that we confront is we don't have any kind of comparable structure in the federal government. So even if the federal government wanted to give you money, there's no possible way for them to do it directly. And we started thinking then about what could we do to correct that? Fast forward to the Affordable Care Act and kind of what's changing now? We know that there are huge kind of initiatives at the federal level to experiment with the way healthcare is organized and financed, ACOs, dual demonstration demos, financial, you know, all of these different bundled payments. And it's interesting, we spent a lot of time hanging out with other provider groups in DC. And a couple of years ago, right, when all these dual eligible demo grants started happening, and our colleagues were like, "Yeah, no big deal." And one of the reasons it's no big deal is because they have protection, right? So they weren't worried about the way that Medicaid might change their payment because their payment was guaranteed. And we were like, "Well, we're not so sure that this is not a big deal." And certainly talking to those of you in California and Massachusetts and other places that are embarking on some of these changes, you certainly thought it was a big deal and did a lot of great work at your state level. And then, you know, we spend a lot of time going around the country, talking to our members. And, you know, kind of the things that are happening at the federal level are a microcosm of what's happening at the state level, right? Rapid shift to managed care. I've been in both, I've been in two states this year that went to managed care rather quickly. The providers are reeling, they're not getting paid, not getting paid adequately, they have no kind of foundation from which to build. All kinds of other experiments happening at the state level. And so what we then decided is, well, we need to do something different. And we started thinking about this actually in 2007, this concept of recreating a federal definition for behavioral health organizations. We started playing with that idea internally in 2007. We brought it to our board in 2009 in April. And then in June of 2009, we actually had an amendment offered by Representative Matt Suie, who will be here tonight, and Representative Engel, when the House Energy and Commerce Committee was negotiating the health reform bill. So 2009, we got the definition of what then became the Excellence Act passed. And then subsequently, we had legislation introduced in the last few Congresses. Now, I don't know, there's these different websites that you can go to and look up bills and they tell you what are the chances that that bill is going to pass? And sometimes my members would send that to me and say, "Hey, I was on this website and Excellence Act don't look too good. They're not, they're not rating you too high." So, you know, I don't blame any of you who didn't bet in Vegas on the Excellence Act passing this year, but maybe it did, right? And I'm feeling kind of Joe Biden right now. Those of you remember his words to President Obama the day that he signed the ACA, but I'm going to, you know, keep it clean. But why was it a big deal? And I think this is why we think it's a big deal for all of you too, because we've established a payment mandate in Medicaid for a new class of providers, you, certified community behavioral health centers. And we got a lot of pushback, right? Especially from the state Medicaid directors who don't like the idea that there needs to be a payment mandate. God forbid, we should pay providers what it costs them to provide a service. What an atrocity that people should be paid what it costs them to actually provide clinically appropriate, necessary care to people in their communities. But there was a lot of pushback around that. Just, you know, a little inside baseball, it was also a miracle because we passed on a bill that just extended current Medicare policy and it's not typical for new things to ride on such a bill. It's also, as Lynda pointed out this morning, the largest single federal investment in behavioral health services in more than a generation. So why did this happen? You'll meet three people tonight who are the reason this happened. Senators Debbie Stabenow, Congresswoman Matt Suie, Congressman Lance, and unfortunately, Senator Blunt won't be here, but it's because of those four people that it happened. Senator Stabenow and Senator Blunt were bugging every one of their colleagues every time they went to the Senate floor. They, I've heard from other staff, from other offices, "Senator Stabenow talked to my boss again about the Excellence Act. Please tell her we're doing everything we can," right? Every opportunity she had to bug somebody to talk about this, she did. And more importantly, both in the House and the Senate, we had multiple amendments ready to be filed on every, on different vehicles throughout this year. So every time there was a bill that looked like it was a viable vehicle, we had a CBO score. So I won't go into the details of how many different variations of the Excellence Act we've had over this last year, how many arguments we've had with the Congressional Budget Office, how many arguments we've had with other people about getting the Excellence Act passed. But, you know, so we had passionate advocates. And also, I want you to be thinking about, as we move forward, also what it took is we had tremendous support from law enforcement and the veterans' communities about getting the Excellence Act passed. And we're already thinking then about how do we parlay that into support to get it implemented, to get states to apply, to participate, that it shouldn't just be, and it doesn't necessarily have to just be us asking our state. I think we could have much broader support about that. All right. So I'm going to try to get Becca up here too to talk about, you know, the, you know, kind of, I want to talk a little bit about what is, what are the details? And I can tell you what's in the statute, right? And then that's where we want to then hear what are some of the questions that you already have, because then we're going to be spending time trying to talk to the regulators about how are they going to interpret and implement this? And so we've got some time. You know, it's interesting, I know, you know, the kind of, the horizon seems very far away for implementation for those of you who are on the ground. The folks who work for the federal agencies who are going to be implementing this have a very different feeling about how soon this all needs to happen and what they need to do to get it ready. So they're kind of freaking a little bit. The other cool thing, there was some misinformation that's been passed around that we've passed the Excellence Act, but we don't have the money. And there's these, you know, we've had to educate some folks about the difference between discretionary and mandatory spending at the federal level. And let me just tell you, all of the money is appropriated for the Excellence Act, both for the grants that will go to states as well as then for the PP, the additional payment that will be available. So let me just take a step back and talk about that. So we've, you know, the bill creates criteria for certified community behavioral health clinics. And we'll talk a little bit more about what are the criteria, but it's very clear that these are agencies that will provide mental health and substance use services. And one of the things we're very committed to as we move forward is that we want this to be as equally available to mental health, to all organizations, and that both kinds of services need to be provided. There's also $25 million available to states to get planning grants. And this is important because your state has to, if they want to then participate in the eight-state demo, they have to have first received a planning grant. So the way the legislation is written, only states that have received planning grants can then apply to be in the demo. So more than eight states can get planning grants? So we want you to be thinking about that. How do you begin, you know, getting your state ready for that? And then what's, what we've structured this is that your state has to develop, as part of the planning grant process, a prospective payment system for the certified clinics. And for the two-year period that they're in the demo, they're going to get 90% federal Medicaid dollars for all of the required services. So just tell you, how does the CBO, the Congressional Budget Office, when they scored our bill, they assumed that all the eight states would be the biggest states in the United States and that they would implement them for all eligible providers. So that was, you know, kind of, so their estimate is based on lots of people participating. So we would like to prove them right, right? We would like, you know, for there to be statewide implementation in eight states and for lots of people to come in. Anything you want to say? All right. All right. So at least, I'm going to take these out of order because I, what I think is the order of importance. So first, again, what we got here is a prospective payment system for these new certified clinics. And by September 1, 2015, CMS has to publish criteria of, you know, kind of what will this new prospective payment system look like? Some of you might know that federally qualified health centers and rural health centers also get prospective payment. And, you know, our legislation has changed over time. We used to just be in the same category as FQHC and Rural Health Center PPS, but all our legislation says is that we get PPS. But I think our goal is to make it as similar to FQHC and Rural Health Center PPS as we possibly can. And there's a practical reason for that and there's a political reason for that. And I'm happy to talk about both of those if you're interested. Politically, right, we want, we want to have common cause with other providers who are invested in this. And I don't think it would serve us well to have something that was different and could potentially cause division within the community. And we think that, you know, PPS is important, right? It establishes a payment mandate within Medicare and the whole reason there's any of these things for safety net providers is to make sure that you can continue to provide this function in your community. Now, we can ask questions or comments at any time, we'll do, we can stop any time. All right. So again, here are some of the questions that we have. Will PPS be the same? Certainly our hope is yes, that's what we're going to be advising. Now, this will mean some changes, right? This will mean we'll need to, you know, do some things differently, doing cost reports like FQHCs do. So we're already then thinking also, what kind of help do folks need in order to do that? What data, you know, so there's going to be some, we understand also there's going to be some changes necessary for you on the practice level and we're trying to think about that and how can we begin helping you, you know, prepare internally for that? But there might be other questions that people have related to PPS and happy to take those. Carl?
The costing that's going to be done, the FQHCs kind of have a really old model of costing. Will there be any opportunity to do things like Michael Porter suggests and sort of doing kind-based activity-driven costing?
You know, again, this is a theoretical question, right? I mean, something that we can certainly, so the question was, could there be different, FQHCs have an old kind of costing that they do in order to establish their PPS, could we have an opportunity to do things differently? You know, I think what's interesting, Carl, is that, you know, we have potentially a lot of flexibility here and this is something that we'll continue to explore. The flip side of that is, you know, how different do we want to be from, from existing models and how does that help us or hurt us? I think those are the things that we're always going to try to have to balance. It was important, you know, the National Association of Community Health Centers never opposed our efforts to pass the Excellence Act. They were officially neutral throughout all of, you know, the last, how many ever years this has been, 2009. And that's, that was actually, in a strange way, very helpful that they were not opposed, that they remain neutral. And we'd like to try to maintain that politically. Well, you know, so the question is, does it apply, and there are microphones for questions, does it apply to kids? You know, I think the only criteria right now is it talks about the services that have to be offered, there's no limitation in the statute about age range.
Hi Chuck, I have a question.
Sure.
When you mentioned moving the concept closer to FQHCs and there are some other benefits to being an FQHC in terms of tort reform and I believe the 340B pharmacy pricing, are those things that we would also consider? I realize it's a hypothetical question.
All right. So Wendy, I would answer that in a way, and hopefully this isn't, you know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with one step, right? So when we thought about all of the different things that are available to FQHCs, what we thought about, what are the two things that would be, you know, kind of have the biggest impact immediately and also wouldn't threaten existing grantees? So that, those were the two kind of calculations we had to make. So that's why we went for Medicaid, Medicaid mandate and prospective payment. And we stayed away from anything that could be seen as being competitive to health centers. But, you know, I have a, this, you know, kind of anticipates a slide that I have later, which is, but it gives us a foundation from which to build, that we'll be able to use this to get additional benefits over time.
Good morning. Pierre Luigi Mancini from Georgia. The criteria that's being developed by the secretary, is there anything National Council or us can do to influence or suggest some of that?
Well, certainly, you know, we don't, we don't have regulatory authority, but part of why we're having this conversation, why we want to engage folks, is we certainly will have the opportunity to give them our ideas. What they then do with those ideas is, you know, kind of up to them, but certainly that's what we want to try to do. And I'm going to, in the next section, try to talk a little bit about the, very quickly about the criteria, but that's exactly why we want to begin having these kinds of conversations. One more and then we'll go on. Do you want to talk about the criteria, the staffing and stuff? I want you to do something. Is there another question or no? Okay. All right. So the same date that the secretary is supposed to, the CMS, we presume it'd be CMS, would publish the criteria for the prospective payment, that's also the same date, September 1, 2015, by which the certification criteria for these new community behavioral health clinics needs to be published. And there are, the statute lists kind of five areas and I'm going to, Becca's going to talk just very briefly about kind of those five areas again, and you have the handout that explains this.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, so as Chuck mentioned, you all have this handout. For those of you that are joining us in our web audience, because I know we're live streaming this presentation, this handout is also available on the Excellence Act section of the National Council website, so you can go there to download it at any time. So I want to talk about the criteria for certified community behavioral health centers. Now, like much legislation, the criteria that is laid out in the law is not complete. It's an outline. And so part of what SAMSA will be doing is issuing a more detailed outline. And then states in turn will be in charge of taking these criteria and using it to certify behavioral health clinics. So the criteria span five sections. The first is around staffing. And what it says about staffing is that staff must have diverse disciplinary backgrounds, okay? So that means we're not just talking medical staff, we're talking an array of professionals who care for the individuals that come to your clinic. They need to be, of course, licensed and accredited per your state licensing requirements. And they have to be culturally and linguistically competent for the communities that they are serving, okay? So cultural competence is built in, is a core part of these staffing standards. The second category is availability and accessibility of services. And, you know, of course, this is very similar to what we see for the criteria for federally qualified health centers, that you have to provide services to anyone who shows up, regardless of their ability to pay. What's interesting here is that you have to provide, that these services have to include crisis management services that are accessible 24 hours a day. So here you see the focus on crisis response as an important element of the continuum of care and as an important value add that you have as certified community behavioral health centers that other organizations do not provide. Okay, so there's a detailed section here on care coordination as well. And what I want to point out to you about care coordination is that certified community behavioral health centers do not exist in a vacuum. And we're not expecting that they will be providers, one-stop shops for every single mental substance use or physical health service you could ever require. You suddenly don't have to become trained in open heart surgery, but you do have to coordinate and partner with other types of healthcare provider organizations to make sure that your patients, when they walk through the door of your clinic, can, through you, be able to access other services from other providers that they might need. So partnerships with federally qualified health centers, partnerships with inpatient psychiatric facilities, partnerships with substance use detox facilities, that's an important thing to note, that substance use is included in many parts of this law, and this is just one of them. Partnerships with other non-healthcare entities, child welfare organizations, justice, criminal justice agencies and facilities, and partnerships with departments of, Department of Veterans Affairs agencies as well. Moving on to scope of services, again, there's a list here of services that must be provided. And again, this list is not, this needs to be operationalized still. And that's what we're going to see in the guidance coming out of the Department of Health and Human Services. In essence, certified community behavioral health clinics have to be comprehensive providers of mental health and substance use care. That includes crisis mental health services, 24-hour crisis response. It includes basic things like screening, assessment, diagnosis, risk assessment, and it includes patient-centered treatment planning. It includes basic primary care screenings and monitoring of those basic primary care indicators to make sure that you know when your patients are perhaps experiencing increases in their blood glucose levels that could be indicative of diabetes and therefore need a referral to primary care, to make sure you know if someone is experiencing weight gain that could lead to other health problems down the road. So this is, these basic primary care screenings and monitorings are an important part of making sure that we have a whole health approach here in certified community behavioral health clinics. Providers have to provide targeted case management, psychiatric rehabilitation, peer support, that's an important one too, peer support and family support, that this law really recognizes the role of peers and the role of families in promoting wellness and recovery. And then, of course, intensive, community-based mental health care for members of the armed forces and veterans, particularly in rural areas where we know we have really, real problems with access for this population. Okay? And finally, is the quality and other reporting section, and this is very brief. It just says that the secretary must establish standards for reporting of encounter data, clinical outcomes, quality data, and so on and so forth. And so here again, we're going to see more detail from the secretary, and this is another important area where we would hope to be able to provide input. So.
So why do we think this is important and what kind of opportunities does this help create? So the payment was important to make sure that you had a stable, stable source of payment to enable you to do, then do these kinds of things, right? To provide responsive care to consumers and family members, to communities. And there's been so much attention over the last few years about, you know, kind of lack of access, the tremendous gap between need and available services. We're hoping that this begins to answer that. One of the reasons we had such tremendous support from law enforcement were the responsibility, the kind of criteria around 24/7 crisis response, that law enforcement wants there to be a stable place in the community where they can bring people who are in crisis and get the officers back on the street. This allows you to kind of build and enhance existing community partnerships. And again, as I said earlier, we think is an avenue then for additional federal investments, that once we have a definition, we have a place in federal law, we can begin to use that in other programs and to try to add additional benefits. And we know there's going to be some questions. You know, the way the criteria are written, even for the required services, is that you either have to do it directly or have a relationship with another provider that does that in your community. So we also try to say, you know, you don't need to, you don't need to build something. If somebody else is already doing it, how do you then enter into a contractual relationship and integrate that in such a way so that's available? You know, again, that's going to, you know, that's going to be then the question, she, the question was what, you know, level of collaboration is used to define partner? And this is another thing, right, that's going to have to be done through the regulatory process. But certainly, you know, any ideas or advice that you would have, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we'd like to hear from you because we understand that the devil's, you know, that it will be important how that gets operationalized. Hi.
Any sense of, this may be too early on, it may be something you, you're hoping for or you think the pilots will work out? A couple of things. You hint at it, but we're aiming for like a federal grant, just like the FQHC grantees, right?
Well, that's a different thing. That's a question of, you know, they have an existing 330 grant program that augments their mandatory, their payment structure in Medicaid. You know, that is a possibility, there could be other things that we go for as well. It'll be interesting to see, you know, what's, what's going to happen to discretionary health spending generally as a result of the Affordable Care Act and especially as more states come online with Medicaid expansion. So I think, I don't know if it's going to be something like 330 grants, or there could be other areas that have been mentioned like tort, you know, that, you know, either, whether it's tort reform or, you know, not tort reform, but, you know, kind of the federally financed malpractice insurance that FQHCs have or, you know, other, other benefits that they have as well.
And the two other things would be, it would be great if we had a case rate for all these many services we'd have to provide instead of fee-for-servicing all of them, just like the FQHCs. And the other thing would be the...
Right. And that's the prospective payment system that will get developed, right? It'll, we're hoping it'll be a per-episode payment like FQHCs have.
Yeah. And the other thing would be the territory. I, you know... I, you know, you can clearly see where the FQHCs want to protect what they do, and we partner with them all the time, we love them, but for us with other behavioral health providers, it would be wonderful if that same concept of territory were applied, I think it might help the communities a bit.
Right. So there's a question over here, and then we'll come back.
Chuck, could, can you hear me, Chuck?
He'll turn, this guy turned on.
I'm on and listen, but, okay?
Yep.
All right. Comment, please, sir, on the Affordable Care Act, states that have expanded or not, and what impact that this has on this concept, and what happens in a state to the non-certifiable centers, centers that can't meet their requirements? And also, in states who've gone to managed care, like Florida, where it goes through HMOs, how does the rate differential get addressed?
Right. So those are all questions that will need to be worked out, right? So, you know, I'll start with the last one first. So the way the prospective payment for FQHCs works is slightly different from state to state, but generally, in where there is managed care, there is a wraparound payment from the Medicaid agency to the FQHC to keep them whole. And so one of the things we're trying to do is to begin discussing with folks who understand FQHC prospective payment, and to help that inform then the kind of information we pass on to CMS, to help them, you know, help them as they move forward. Your second question, you know, the, obviously, the statute is agnostic about whether or not your state has done Medicaid expansion. You know, the question is, are you, is your state interested in making this kind of investment? And, you know, so I don't know that I could answer that, you know. The second question is, you know, if you look at, you know, there are FQHCs, but there are, continue to be many different kinds of primary care providers in communities. There are free clinics, there are other freestanding primary care providers, so there's nothing about being an FQHC that has then forced, or that the availability of that status that has forced every other kind of primary care provider to move in that direction. You know, again, we would hope that you're, you know, the way the certification criteria is written now is your state will choose which providers it brings in. And what we would hope, right, is to the, our state associations, our members will be advocating and try to bring in as many who are interested in coming in.
I think there's a political issue around the ACA, and making sure everyone understands that this is not part of the ACA, it's totally unconnected.
Right.
So if you have a state that doesn't want to expand Medicaid, that hates Obamacare, this is not about that. And in fact, this is one of the few things, I probably shouldn't use this word, but actually a supplantation, which is almost never allowed. In some ways, states will certify organizations that are doing some of these services, now will do them in enhanced way, and they're going to get 90% FMAP when they may have been getting 50 or 60%.
Right. And we hope what comes along with that, right, is better integrated care, better coordinated care, more comprehensive care, in addition with that, to that additional federal investment.
Two questions. Typically Medicaid money is not subject to any of the federal guidelines about you have to pay federal minimum wage, and you have to hire X number of people with disabilities. Am I correct that this doesn't apply to this?
You know, that's something we've not thought about, but we can, I have no idea.
Okay. And then the second question is, I'm surprised, when I read the list of scope of services, that there's not more preventative-type services required. Are they going to be expected to be in the proposals?
Again, you know, the, as you could imagine, this list has changed quite, even this year has changed quite a bit, and a lot of the details have changed quite a bit in response to different issues that have been raised by different members of Congress. So what the list says, it's not an exhaustive list, right? The secretary can require additional things, and so that, you know, there is still that flexibility as well on the part of the department to augment what's there.
I have two quick questions. The first question is, it seems like the person who is going to apply for being one of these prospective sites is going to be the actual state. Is there a place that a community mental health center can go to figure out who at our state we can talk with, to encourage them to apply, to be one of the states considered? And if so, where can we look?
Yeah, so we would presume, again, this is all brand new, as I'm talking to folks at CMS, they're like, you know, they don't know which department in CMS is going to be writing the regs, they don't know, is this going to be the Medicaid folks who do elderly programs, is it going to be a CMS innovation? But presumably, we would think it's going to be your state Medicaid authority that's going to apply, but that's just our guess. But we will be monitoring that. The other thing that we're going to be working on, obviously, are trying to put together advocacy tools for you to use to have those conversations with your state leadership. And we've engaged some different consulting firms who already have relationships with state mental health and Medicaid agencies to help us begin that process already. So you can go in and have an informed conversation.
Awesome. Okay, and my very next question is just, it says that September 1, 2015, that they are going to award the eight states, and then just five short months later, after they're awarded, they're going to start, you know, to make other plans with community mental health centers. Is there going to be ongoing discussion about what a community mental health center can do, because five months is kind of like a short time, to be prepared if their state is selected?
Right. So the question is, the criteria get published on September 2015, and the planning grants start January 1, 2016. And I have to say, we didn't have a lot of input into that timeline, right? There were some other offices that kind of got involved with that, and it was actually on the day that it was going to get passed, I was like, wow, that's a quick turnaround. So, yeah, we're interested in seeing how that's going to work as well. I would imagine what's going to happen, this is just my guess, right, is that they'll publish the criteria, and then there'll be also the announcement then for, you know, kind of the availability of people to apply, you know, for the grants would happen almost simultaneously. But, you know, so the planning grant is the first, just the first part, and then you have some time, and then, as this also says, your state will have some opportunity then, after it has awarded the planning grant, to do a lot of the kind of engagement with the community.
Hi, Chuck.
Hi.
Governance is such an important issue for us. I know many of us are very proactive about having consumers on our boards, but FQHCs are required to have a majority of their board, as you know, consumers of the organization. Any thoughts or guidance around that, anything we can do to advocate to have kind of the flexibility around governance that we have had?
Right. So I'd just say, you know, that there's nothing in the statute that, so there's two other, two limitations that FQHCs have that are not anywhere in the bill that passed. One is that they're restricted to medically underserved areas or populations, and two, that they have to have, that there are requirements regarding governance. Neither of those things appear in the statute.
I have a question about state Medicaid directors. You were saying that many were opposed to this. I believe Kentucky's, where I'm from, was one of them. So what can we do, or what can the organization do to help these folks come along, because, you know, I'm ready to do this two years ago.
Yeah.
But my state isn't, so.
Well, I'd say a couple of things, right? One, there are some state Medicaid authorities that we've already, some state Medicaid directors. We've had letters of support from different Medicaid directors around the country for the statute, and we know other places that are interested in applying. So well, obviously, those early adopters will want them to talk to their colleagues. And then secondly, is this idea that we have then to begin to put together some materials for you to have those conversations. And I've heard from folks around the country already who have begun to have those conversations, and I've gotten questions from some state Medicaid agencies already, so these conversations are already happening.
Just a question, I noticed that there are eight states that are going to be selected, so is there some science around that number of eight? But really, the question is, what's in it for a state, and what might be a criteria that a state would be selected on the initial round?
Right. So the selection criteria, so I'll tell you, to answer the first question, the policy lab is very complicated. It's how much does the CBO says this costs, and then what are the variables by which we can adjust to get the cost down? So we had very clear direction about it had to cost less than $1 billion, and so only a couple of things that we could play with, the length of time, the number of states. And we also felt very strongly, we think one of the things, if we look at health homes that were passed in the ACA, they also had a 90% FMAP for a much more limited set of services, and we've had 15 states apply for that. And we think that the 90% FMAP will be quite an inducement for states to want to be in the planning grant, because this is a much broader, all of those required services will get 90% FMAP. So I think your state has the opportunity, not only to receive some substantial federal investment, but also to make a more comprehensive, accessible mental health system. We hope that the combination of those, and substance use system, we hope that the combination of those two things will be compelling.
ESI, good afternoon. Welcome to DC. Thanks for coming. Listen, I wanted to take off on that last question in particular, with respect to the number of states and the amount of money that we're talking about here. I just wanted to just take a few brief moments to say that, you know, I've had this contract, ladies and gentlemen, since 2005, somewhere in there, and wow, right? So it's like night and day here at the National Council. I can't ever remember what it was like 10 years ago. I mean, so the leadership here, team here, Linda Rosenberg, Jeannie Campbell, Chuck Engolia, wow, what an amazing set of accomplishments that they've moved over. Short period. I want to say, secondly, that, you know, I've been a lobbyist for my entire adult life, so that's the best part of 30 years, and I've been a, I've been a mental health lobbyist for various employers and clients for about 20. Been at this long enough that there was a, there was a bumper sticker, when I first started doing this in the 19, early 1980s, that was very popular in the Washington metro area, and it said, and it was politically incorrect, it said, "Please don't tell my mother I'm a lobbyist, she thinks I'm a piano player in a whorehouse." So I've been at this long enough that, you know, we moved, when I was with what is now Mental Health America, we moved the first parity amendment, it was a Medicaid amendment as a matter of fact, in the Finance Committee in 1995, Senator, Senator Kent Conrad from North Dakota offered that amendment. And then we moved a parity amendment on the floor of the Senate, Senator Stabenow, pardon me, Senator Wellstone and Senator Domenici offered that amendment on the floor of the Senate, first time mental health parity had ever been debated on the Senate floor. And I really think about this legislation in exactly the same way. That effort was about trying to bring equality to private health insurance, trying to get mental health and addiction service, and addiction care and private health insurance to be treated like medical surgical services. And that's, at the end of the day, what the Excellence Act is about. It's about equity. You should be paid the same way that doctors and hospitals are in treating patients with medical surgical conditions. So that's the way I think about this. Now, when the Affordable Care Act was passed, because of the increase in, in the caseload for primary care physicians, federally qualified health centers, and rural health clinics, our medical surgical colleagues received $11 billion in the Affordable Care Act. You got a pack of cigarettes and a slap on the back. And so we are now trying to even the score, and it's very much by, as Chuck has indicated, this prospective payment system didn't fall out of the sky. We deliberately set up the legislation in such a manner that you would be treated like federally qualified health centers and rural health clinics. Now, there's going to have to be some modification in the rulemaking process, because federally qualified health centers and rural health clinics serve primarily low-income women and children. It is a primary care population. What's groundbreaking about this is that this is a prospective payment system to serve individuals with disabling psychiatric conditions. So almost invariably, the regulations, and you touched on that a little bit just in your questions, are going to have to take into account the fact that a significant portion of your patient base are individuals with very disabling conditions. And so therefore, there's going to have to be some modifications there. I wanted to talk a little bit about your role, and you, and we discussed this a few moments ago. Now, so, you know, as your lobbyist, I need about 25 to 30 state planning grants, that's what I need. So now, we need your input, the National Council does, Chuck does, Linda does, Jeannie does, regarding the very technical questions that you just answered a few moments ago. Very, very important that we answer those effectively. At the same time, we need to be able to show the Congress that there is a significant amount of state interest in this matter. And what that will mean is state Medicaid authorities filing state planning grants. At the end of the day, that's how we're going to be graded. And so if we get 15 to 20 to 25 state planning grants, then wow, all of a sudden, we've demonstrated a significant amount of support for this, notwithstanding the hesitations of the National Association of State Medicaid Directors. And that's how, let me, to be honest with you, I've already met with Senator Stabenow and Stab a couple of times since the legislation passed, I've already asked for more money. We want more states, we want more years, we want more. We want more equity, more fairness than we've got now, right? So almost invariably, but that, a lot of that's going to be on you, a lot of that's going to be on you, because the state Medicaid director and the state mental health authority is going to have to file a planning grant. Now, so almost invariably, what that will mean is some combination of the individuals sitting in this room are going to have to reach out to these individuals who make these decisions at the state level to file these applications. The more applications we get, the higher the chance there is of expanding this thing, to expand it beyond the eight states that the gentleman described a few moments ago. As Chuck, as indicated, that was not magic, it was just, we had to work within the budget limitations that were set by the Congressional Budget Office. Your role begins as soon as tonight. To the extent that you have an invitation to the Advocacy Leadership Awards event this evening, I need you to be there, we need you to be there. Senator Stabenow's going to be there, Representative Matsui's going to be there, Representative Lance is going to be there. And these are the folks that are going to bring us to the promised land, you know, these are the folks that are going to expand this demonstration in a manner that we need to. So they need to feel some love, man. I mean, the, you know, so what that means is, when they get up, when they get up to speak, you got to get up. You got to cheer, you got to make noise, you got to sing rhythmically, whatever your culture permits relative to your expression of joy, that's what we need. If you want to whistle, if you want to bring, you know, all type of horns, I'm all about it, really. Really, I am all about it. So we need to, we need to show these folks some love tonight, because particularly Senator Stabenow, Senator Blunt, you know, this was a very controversial process, and this was not an easy lift, and they really, really stuck with us during, you know, the perils of Pauline moment over the last 15 months, 16 months with respect to this legislation, they really stuck with us. They really believe in this concept of equality, as it turned out. This is a very complicated topic, and the, and just reflecting the questions that you just described, that, you know, that you've asked today, it's going to be a very complicated effort to get this rule passed. But as it turned out, the political message here, we want equity, we want to be treated like medical surgical, like our medical surgical colleagues. If you want to stop having people with serious mental illness seen in prison facilities, you got to invest in us. Turned out to work pretty well. Those messages ultimately worked fabulously, as a matter of fact, and so we're going to need more of that. That's it. Thanks so much, and, you know, we're obviously going to be here to take away.
I think I'm the straight guy.
Tell people with 5:30 cherry blossom.
Yes.
For the awards.
Yes. So the awards event was at the 5:30 tonight in the Cherry Blossom Room, and we hope you all can be there. Now, Al said it's all your responsibility, but we also will continue to try to help you make that case, right? We will put together advocacy materials, we're having conversations with Medicaid agencies, we want you to be talking to your single-state agencies, substance use and mental health, it's off-program. mental health, it's off-program. So Cherry Blossom, 5:30 for the advocacy reception, it might not be in your program, but just show up. It's okay, don't worry about it, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. All right, so we got to let you go to your next session. You have our email addresses, send us questions, send us ideas anytime, we so appreciate everything that you do, thank you.